So, good morning, everybody. We're going to welcome everybody to Monday, March 18th, to our regular council meetings, but before we get into that, we're going to call to order a public hearing that we have today. And under 2-1, we're going to go to our corporate administrator to read aloud the notice.
Thank you. As required by the Local Government Act, a public hearing is being held at this time to hear from anyone who may be affected by the proposed changes to the city zoning bylaw. The proposed amendment in bylaw number 4162 is to rezone the property located at 1404 101st Avenue from C4 Commercial Service Zone to RS2 Residential Single Duplex Zone, and there were no written responses regarding this.
Excellent. Thank you. So with that, we'll look to the gallery then to see if there's any questions or comments. Calling a second time? You sure? No? Okay. Calling a third time? Before we close the public hearing, Brenda, I just have a question. I know we talked about this, we spoke about this on last week. Because we've had a couple of public hearings all in a row for the same area of town, would it be under the regular meeting of council that we'd look at making a motion to have the rest, letters go out to the rest of the place, or would that just be a given?
Through your worship, there is another zoning amendment coming on this meeting, and at that time, we could request notification to the whole block.
Okay.
And we could do it that way, and then anybody interested could all apply in one zoning application instead of one meeting after another.
Instead of, everybody learning that their neighbor just did it, so they do it and it just keeps going, yeah. Okay, thank you. So with that, then, we will close the public hearing. And we're going to move on and call to order our regular meeting for March 18th. And we're going to start with some new and council business that we actually have some on the agenda. Thank you. So we'll start with 2-1, and first is a verbal update, I believe, from Counselor McFadden.
Thank you, your worship. I should have reported upon this at our last meeting, but somehow it slipped, didn't get on the agenda. But at the recent LGLA meeting in Richmond, the airport manager, the chamber manager, and I had a meeting with the Director of Marketing and Sales for a fairly major B.C.-based airline about the possibility of them providing service here. And they're very interested in that. They've been in Vancouver for quite a while, and their recent expansion was out to the West Cutneys, and that's working out very well for them, so their next foray will be to the north. They've already familiar with this area because they've run a number of charters up here. Their intention was to come up here probably just this month, and that hasn't happened. I'm thinking that they'll be waiting till after the election in May before they make any decisions, but it's, they're very interested. Their next, their next trip will be to the north. So at this point in time, they would rather that their name not be made public, because I don't think they want to let their competitors know what they're, what they're up to. And if this report may have already done that, I hope not, but thank you very much.
Yes, and thank you for attending that meeting and working on behalf of the airport. That's, that was great that you did that, and thanks Kathleen for going along and helping out. Is there any questions for Counselor McFadden on that? Okay. Thanks very much for that update. And under 2-2, we have note here from Counselor Schuman regarding the NCLGA, and an update from her.
Yeah, so this is just an FYI for everyone that attended the meetings in Prince George and thought I would give you a little update of what NCLGA is up to, and I hope everybody's signed up for the convention in May.
Good. Thank you. Any questions on that for Counselor Schuman? No? Was there anything else from anyone under new council business then? Counselor Malkinson.
Good morning, your worship.
Good morning.
Nice morning this morning. I just wanted to publicly congratulate the local interact club for raising $19,200 at their recent Malawi dinner towards upgrades for a school in Malawi. Also wanted to make council aware of a Easter extravaganza on April 30th. It's being coordinated, I believe, by some people involved, as speakers. I recently attended the Healthy Living Workshop last week, I believe, on Thursday. It was a discussion about how outdoor activities and healthy living in the community sort of relate together, and it was, there was some really good, there was some really good discussion about, you know, all the different opportunities that were, that are around for everybody in the community, you know, all the different, I was make sure, I made sure to reiterate that there are a lot of recreational opportunities, but a lot of the discussions seemed to center around, how exactly are we advertising and making the public aware of all the opportunities that we have? And one recommendation that came from, came from those discussions was a possibly having a sign at the entrance to town saying what kind of recreational opportunities are available in Dawson Creek for people that are passing by or for people that are unfamiliar. And I just thought it was an interesting idea, I just, maybe for your information, maybe I'll bring it up in the future.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a neat, neat idea, though. Good, thanks for that. Any other updates? So seeing none, then, we're going to move right into the meeting then. Under minutes, we have 3-1. We have public hearing minutes and as well as the regular minutes from March 4th. Counselor McFadden, Counselor Malkinson. All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried? And is there any business arising from anyone? So seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence. First one, 5-1 is a letter from Mile Zero Roping Club, but I believe they're coming as a delegation later on, so I think it would be better that we just table that one till after the delegation. And we'll move on to 5-2, which is a letter from Mr. Bob Zimmer, who is asking for some support. He's looking at having a name change of the local federal riding. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we couldn't afford a letter supporting this idea. It seems pretty straightforward and reasonable.
Sure. And Counselor Wilbur was seconding?
Yep.
And any discussion then?
It'll be nice to see a name that's inclusive of everybody in the writing.
Yeah, well, he brought up some good points there in his, his letter as well, so.
I'm sure it will make the Northern Rockies Municipality District happy.
Regional municipality.
Regional municipality.
Yes. Excellent. Okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? And it's carried. 5-3 is a letter from the Dawson Creek Curling Club, and this is, they're looking for an extension of a liquor license basically for the facility and upstairs, right now they have it, but looking for it for downstairs and everywhere as well. So Counselor Schuman?
I don't see any reason why we couldn't support this unless staff, of course, has some great reasons why we shouldn't, and I'd be interested to hear if there were any reasons why we shouldn't.
So we'll have it seconded if somebody wants to second it first. Counselor McFadden? Jim, is there something that you want, you were able to say at this time, or?
Well, through your worship, this is a significant change to the liquor license. At the moment, the drinking activity and the curling activity are separated, so you may drink before you curl, or you may drink after you curl, but you may not drink while you curl. This change would be more aligned with, say, the bowling lanes and their setup where you would be able to drink while you curl. I'd just point out to you that this is a public building. Unlike the bowling lanes who have their own building and pay us taxes, this is a publicly-owned building that you subsidize, and I don't know if, I know that the purpose of the lease assigned with them is for the purpose of curling, not for the purpose of drinking, and I don't know if you want to go to this kind of an extension.
Okay. Counselor Parzal?
Yeah, I've had people contact me about things related to this, and it's a pretty complicated issue. I talked to the chairman of the school board, and there's concerns about this matter. And I let, I understand the school board is going to be sending some letter to the curling club. The issue for them would be that there's a very vibrant, let's call it youth curling program, and I think the curling club believes that program is very important to the future of curling in the community, and if there's going to be drinking in different parts of the curling club, then the school district may have to bear out of that. I think this letter of correspondence here is also, has relationships to the anticipated deal between the Legion and the curling club about the Legion moving there. And so I think we should not support this letter at this time until we have all those matters and issues discussed and clarified.
Thanks, good points, yeah. Counselor Wilbur?
I do feel, and so does Counselor Parzal saying, my concern is that if we allow this, now we're increasing issues of monitoring it or policing it, and we now have alcohol mixed in the general area with youth, so I would, I would be speaking against this. I think the system they have now works, it's well-contained, and I don't think anyone's complained of having to go upstairs to have a beer between their games, so that's where I stand on the issue.
Sure. Thank you. Jim, we've had requests similar, I believe, in the past, if I recall, for the hockey rinks, and they've always been turned down for similar reasons. Is that correct? And we've allowed special occasion permits in different areas, but we've actually quite enforced-
We've not allowed licensed, permanent licensed area. We've never had a similar request, because that request would be that you could skate your shift, go to the penalty line, or go to the players' bench and have a brewski while you waited for your next shift.
Not that some guys would mind.
And we haven't really exactly had the same, same request, but you have always had a policy of being very careful about where you allowed liquor to be served in the buildings that you own. And the curling rink lounge license itself was issued at a time where there were different sensitivities. I suggest you, you probably wouldn't even okay that now, given that it is so proximate to the schools and everything. But this expansion is, it definitely ramps it to a different level.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure the exact intent of, of the request, because I have not heard any complaints from any of the curlers that it's an issue. When they have their bahn spiel's, it's upstairs. I am a curler, and I've traveled all around. I have, I can't think of another curling rink I've been to where they've allowed curling outside or down when you're playing. It's usually up in a designated area. So I struggle with this as well, unless there's more to it that they want to present on the reasoning. At this time, I can't support it either. Any other comments? Counselor Malkinson?
It must be tied in with, like Charlie said, it must be related, there must be other things at work here that are not identified in the letter, that might be included, but I'll be waiting to hear those when, when we hear them. You know, I'm speaking of the Legion, you know?
Yeah.
But yeah.
And if that is the case, that's not, that's nothing identified in the letter, so we can only go on what the information we have, which is they were just, like, drinking in the whole facility?
That's right.
There's no other information attached to that, so. Okay? No other comments then? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? And it's defeated? You got those ones there? Just the one was in favor? It's not quite time for delegations, so we're going to move up to reports. The first report we have is 7-1, and this is from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding our Economic Development Advisory Committee. Counselor McFadden?
Your worship, I have some issues with this, and I, as it does involve personalities and people, I'm wondering if this should not be referred to the closed meeting for discussion? That would be my first request.
I would second that.
Okay. Counselor Parzal would second that. Brenda, under the stipulation it's dealing with personnel, personal matters, is that, is it justified to go into the closed, just to make sure?
What we could do is refer the matter to the closed, and then there will be a motion brought forward to consider if it should be enclosed or not first.
Okay.
And if that passes, then we'll move forward.
Okay. Then, okay, that would be fine. That would have to be done under 16-1, we'd have to make the resolution there officially.
Include that in, yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion then? So all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried? 7-2 is a report from the Chief Financial Officer, and this is regarding the gaming report for December 31st. Counselor Parzal?
I'd like to move Report Number 13-061 from the Chief Financial Officer, a gaming report, December 31st, 2012. Be received, further, the council allocate 2012, 2013 gaming funds to the Calvin Court Center for the Arts Project to a maximum of $2 million.
Seconded by Counselor Schuman. And any comments? So seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried? We'll move on to 7-3, and that's Report 13-055 from the Deputy Director of Community Services. This is regarding a request for a hotspot, internet hotspot at the arena. Counselor McFadden?
What is that? I don't know what he's talking about.
Internet hotspot?
Yeah, tell me about that.
Well, that would be, so right now, if people came in with their laptops, iPhones, iPads, that they'd be able to link in, hook into free wireless service, basically, internally, instead of having to use cellular. Right now, we have Wi-Fi here at City Hall and other places, other businesses do it, and we've had people come in and request that we have this at the arenas as well, especially a lot of times when you have people sitting there for a couple hours watching their kids at skating or hockey and get some work done. Counselor Parzal?
I'd like to move the recommendation that Report Number 13-055 and the Deputy Director of Community Services, re-arena internet hotspot, be received, further, the council partner with the Peace Region Internet Society, PRIS, on a free internet hotspot at the Memorial and Kinne Arenas, further, council approves $72.10 for installation costs.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Malkinson. And discussion then?
If I can speak to the motion-
Definitely.
Basically, reiterating what you just said, that a lot of people spend a lot of time at these places, often supervising children, and I think this would be a good community service, and I know the PRIS is going to look after their proponent free, so I think that's a good gesture as well.
Yes. Yeah, big thanks to, to them for that, and, you know, if you're down there this weekend, the arena is absolutely full with the turnover provincials we're holding, and there's parents from all over B.C. that are here, and, you know, I even heard it last night, that it would've been nice to have the laptop set up. Any other questions then? So all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried? 7-4 is Report 13-056, and this is regarding our electrical services contract. Counselor Malkinson?
I'd like to remove that Report Number 13-056 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding the electrical, electrical services contract be received, and further, the council extend KNO's electric service contract for an additional year commencing June 1st, 2013, and ending May 31st, 2014, at the following rates. Journeyman, $62 an hour, I think, and non-journeyman, $49.50 an hour, and materials markup, 8%.
Thanks. Counselor Schuman is seconding. Any questions? Go ahead, Counselor.
I was right, it was an hour, right? Yeah? Okay.
Yeah, if you'd like to make a motion for a different rate, I mean, no, it is.
I'm sure they'd be happy with that.
No.
Well, maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I suppose me asking about the kind of service that they provided to the city may not necessarily be appropriate, eh?
Well, actually, that probably could be a good question, yes. Go, Jim.
Through your worship, when we tendered for this service in the, three years ago, the tender was for a three-year contract with a city option to extend for a year, and so people bid on that basis. We're recommending the extension exactly because the service has been excellent, so we want to take advantage of the one extra year that council built in as their ability. If we hadn't had that experience, we'd be recommending you go to tender.
Okay. Good. Any further questions? So all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried? And now, it's Report 7-5 is Report 13-057, and this is from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development. This is regarding a request for exemption for tow trucks. It's starting to be a familiar request. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, I'd move that Report Number 13-057 from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding an exceptional towing request for exemption be received, and further, the, the request for exemption to permit tow trucks over one ton to park in residential neighborhoods and designate them as emergency vehicles be denied.
Seconded by anyone? Counselor Wilbur? Any questions about this? Counselor McFadden?
As I recall, the issue was that, the complaints of neighbors was that they would leave the trucks running all night or start them up every hour or so in the winter months, and it was, it was disturbing the decent tranquility. I don't know if they were diesels or just regular trucks, but I think that was the issue. It wasn't so much who were parked, it was that they ran them half the night.
Every, every situation's had different complaints. A lot of them have been because of that, some of them have been because these are quite lengthy trucks parked in confined space areas sometimes. Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, I don't believe the running at night thing is part of the complaints on this particular situation. This has been more about the size of the vehicle and what the neighbors see as an inappropriate mix between backing up commercial vehicles and little kids running around playing. Your, your bylaw prohibits it generally, so citizens don't necessarily have to tell us exactly why they're complaining, they just have to point out that one is in their neighborhood and they don't want it there.
And the bylaw is one ton and over? Is that, or?
Yes.
Over one ton?
My law says you may have a commercial vehicle under one ton, so this would be a van with a Vote for Mike Bernier sticker on the side of it. You can have one of those on your, on your property-
Is that commercial?
But you can't have any commercial vehicles over one ton in a residential area.
I certainly would lodge a complaint about that one.
Yeah. It's okay, I think my neighbors would, too.
You know, coming to work every day is one thing, but seeing the same face driving around town all the time, where every time you drive down Las Avenue-
Unbearable. Well, the campaign is mercifully short, what I read.
Anyway, we'll get back to topic, though. Counselor Parzal?
Perhaps I, I, I was kind of empathic to their request, and I'd just like to, to hear again from staff why they're making this recommendation, because I, I thought the rationale in the requests from the companies was kind of a, a good one, and yet, so there's maybe something I'm missing. So perhaps just verbally, if they could, reemphasize the reasons why they're recommending that this request be denied.
And the complaints have been coming for many years, and the requests have come, I think it's a third or fourth one since I've been on council.
Through your worship, the, you have a whole package of regulations that are in one way or another aimed at preserving what you would call the residential character of residential neighborhoods. And you do that, your rationale for doing that is that this is the single biggest investment that anyone makes in their life, is their home. And they do so in the expectation that they're living in a residential neighborhood, certain standards apply. So you have zoning is the primary one, which says you won't have interspersal of commercial activity and residential. You have zones that are residential. That also talks to setbacks and parcel coverage. And you have a maintenance bylaw that says the state of the appearance of the yard, what it has to be, and you have, this regulation is just one of those that is aimed at preserving residential character. So you lay out $350,000 for your home, you can be assured that the city is going to keep that area residential for little kids to play in and people to raise their families rather than for people to conduct commercial activity. So you have a whole package of them. The reason count, staff recommends is because council stated its will, and this staff is not going to recommend it, council has been wrong. So the-
That's a smart move.
What I can tell you is, if you make this change, then the people who are currently complaining that the residential character of their neighborhood has been impacted, will then be lobbying you to change the bylaw back.
Jim, just, if I can, too, just for clarity, the only time we deal with this is on complaint, typically, because the way the bylaws worded and written, we don't, our bylaw officers don't, don't drive around looking for these. Now, the reason why I mention that is because you'll, a lot of times in these letters, you'll say, well, how come I'm getting a ticket, but the other towing company, you know, on the other side of town is in a residential area and they're not? Obviously, it doesn't bother the neighbors in that area, and thus, we don't respond to it. So just want to make sure people remember that part, too. Counselor Parzal? And you want to move on?
Yeah, good point, and thank you, Jim. You know, Jim's comments reminded me why, some of my thoughts on Sunday when I was reading the agenda here about this matter, is that whilst I obviously will support what is recommended now, that as I drive around the community, I am amazed in how in certain areas, it's almost impassable. The roads are impassable due to the parking of large RV vehicles or trailers in the, in the road, or where many people are now staying, you now have a whole bunch of, of large welding trucks and stuff, and so there's many places in town that it seems to me that things are getting a little congested by, by the parking. And I, it was that sort of thinking that made me ask for the explanation from staff. Thank you.
Sure. And I know bylaw has responded to some of those issues, too, and complaints have come in, and responded accordingly where our bylaw allows, so. Sorry, I saw hands over on this side, I thought. Counselor Wilbur?
I just wanted to say that I think that if we were to change it, we'd be kind of opening up a Pandora's box, that they are not the only towing companies, so we would then be allowing several businesses to be able to park in our residential neighborhoods, so for that, I am supporting the recommendation.
Okay. Any other questions? Jim, sorry.
Yeah, just, I do want to reemphasize that it's the neighborhood that sets the standard, so we have many areas where parking that is not permitted by the bylaw is occurring, but the neighbors do not complain because they do not see it as an issue.
Yeah. Okay. No further questions? So all those in favor then? Opposed? And it's carried? We're moving on to bylaws. First bylaw is 8-1, and that's zoning amendment bylaw number 4162, 2013, for third reading and adoption. Counselor Malkinson, seconded by Counselor Schuman. All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried? Bylaw under 8-2, we have 13-058, and this is the Fire Protection Amendment, bylaw 4172, for first three readings. Remember Counselor McFadden and Malkinson? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried? And the last bylaw, we have, under Report 13-060, and this is zoning amendment bylaw 4163 for first two readings. Remember Counselor Malkinson, seconded by Counselor Wilbur? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried? I'm sorry, did you have a question? You were kind of-
This was the time to extend notification to all those in that area?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Are you gonna do it?
No.
Yeah. Thanks, Counselor. So with that, it is nine o'clock. We'll move back to delegations that we have. We have a few delegations today, and the first one we have is, under 6-1, we have Mr. Henderson in attendance. And we, today, we have the proclamation for World Water Day, and I think we have a few... Okay. I'll just read out the proclamation, and then we'll... Yeah. No pressure, just so you know. Yeah, right on. So whereas an international day to celebrate fresh water was recommended in, at the 1992 United Nations Conference on Environment and Development, the United Nations General Assembly responded by designated the 22nd of March, 1993, as the first World Water Day. And whereas International World Water Day is held annually on the 22nd of March as a means of focusing attention on the importance of fresh water and advocating for the sustainable management of fresh water resources. And whereas each year- And whereas each year, World Water Day highlights a specific aspect of fresh water with this year's theme as International Year of Water Cooperation, the city of Dawson Creek is inviting the community to participate in upcoming events. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim March twenty-second, two thousand thirteen as World Water Day and encourage all residents in and around the surrounding community to show the world that they care by conserving water. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. Give you a few minutes, John.
Yeah, you're welcome. So as the mayor indicated, this year's theme is cooperation, so we thought it'd be fitting that we're going to work with Shell and have a tour of our water reclamation facility. And that's on World Water Day, correct now? And so it's for the first forty people that sign up, so for information on that, they can contact City Hall. And it'd be a great opportunity to come out and see the water reclamation facility, and I think you go up to Shell's facilities as well. And also, we're going to be launching the rain barrel and composter program as well on World Water Day. So again, for more information on that, contact, mail in at City Hall.
Oh, we should mention on that too, two years ago we worked, we had the rain barrel program, and it was very successful. Hundreds of them, I'll put up. Hopefully it'll be another successful year. Any questions? Just checking. Good, thanks. So we have another proclamation today. It's great to have staff involved with these today too, and we have Matthew Melanie in here, our energy manager and our sustainability clerk. I thought I saw Melanie, is she? Okay. And this is for our annual proclamation for Earth Hours. A few people coming, great.
It's not a competition.
We will, if you will. So whereas Earth Hour is a global movement that began in Sydney, Australia in two thousand seven, encouraging individuals, businesses, and governments to take positive actions for the environment by switching off their lights for one designated hour. And whereas Earth Hour two thousand thirteen is being held from eight thirty to nine thirty PM on Saturday, March twenty-third, and the theme for two thousand thirteen is, as you can see here, "I Will If You Will: Dare the World to Save the Planet." And whereas the city of Dawson Creek will once again be participating by shutting off all non-essential lighting at city facilities during Earth Hour, now therefore I do hereby proclaim eight thirty PM to nine thirty PM on Saturday, March twenty-third as Earth Hour and encourage all residents in and around Dawson Creek to show the world that they care by turning lights off during this hour. Thank you, and this is great display. Malcolm Melanie's not up here. You worked so hard on this as well.
Well, there's a quick little clip that after you've presented the proclamation that we're gonna watch.
Okay. Excellent. So did you want to say? Everything's here in the proclamation, okay? So thanks very much, so then, what you want. Okay, well, let's just send this up quick then, and well, thanks everyone.
It's a clip we're gonna watch in the overhead.
Excellent, so now the challenge is to everybody what they'll do in that hour. So for myself, I think we'll have a lot of fun at my house. I know my kids won't like me because I think what I'll do for that hour is make them turn their Xbox off. And maybe have a nice late candlelight dinner in the house, so I'll put the challenge out to everybody else, think of something fun, creative, get the family involved for that hour. Excellent, well, thanks again, Melanie. Thanks, everybody, for coming in. Okay, thanks, everybody. We're gonna move, continue on here in delegations. Our next delegation under six three is Ms. Zoe Ross and Mac Leesk, who are in attendance, and we invite you to come forward up to the table. We understand you want to address counsel today on a suggestion that you have. So, good morning.
Morning. So we're representing the Mile Zero Roping Club, which is a fairly new club that we started in the fall. It's team roping is a sport that's grown in popularity in the Peace Region the last probably ten years or so. It's really grown. And we've had private individuals in the past haul cattle in for the team roping at the Lakota Center in the winters. And this year we decided to form a club because it hasn't worked very well for individuals because of the amount of work that's entailed in it. We've had a really successful year as a club. We want to say thank you to you guys for the Lakota Center because it's been, it's a phenomenal facility, and we get lots of compliments from out of towners. And it's very busy. Our last jackpot that we had, we had two hundred and forty-two teams in the one category and a hundred and seventy-some teams in that other category. So we've had really good attendance. We've had people coming from Quinnell, Prince George, Fort St. John, Grand Prairie, Chatlin. There's three is a big area that people are coming from. The problem that we're having is, as a club, we have to haul cattle from out of town. For the jackpots, we've been hauling in about seventy cattle on Sundays, and that's a lot of pressure for our volunteers to be doing that. It's done strictly on a volunteer basis, and so we wanted to approach the city for the possibility of having somewhere in town that's closer to the Lakota Center where we could keep cattle for the winter. And it would make it easier as a club and more doable to haul cattle to the Lakota Center from there. So in our letter, we've kind of put a couple options that we've come up with when we've talked to the DC Arena and Staples Association. And so that's what we're proposing today for requesting.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add, Matt?
I'd just like to say that there's other interest groups that have interest in this too. The cutters are interested in using our cattle and there's the Monday night group that started up, that they started roping the mechanical cow, and they moved on to real cattle and we supply cattle to them as well. And there's probably a group of twenty-five to thirty there of new and upcoming ropers that are...
Lots of youth that are involved in it, the High School Rodeo Association as well.
So you're looking for space where you can, so you're not having to on the Sunday have the volunteers drive the cattle in, so actually house them inside the city?
Yeah. Yeah, we were kind of hoping maybe around the, like, the rodeo fairgrounds. And as a club, we're willing to provide all the care for the cattle and whatever is needed for the facility as far as shelter and fencing and that type of thing.
I'll show how naive I am on this. How much space do seventy cattle require? To be fair, I guess, I mean...
Probably an area hundred yards by a hundred yards, three hundred, hundred meters by a hundred meters is...
Okay, I assume more.
Yeah, that's what they're in this year, is an area that size.
Okay. Charlie, go ahead.
So one of the issues is water. How do you propose providing water?
Well, the one site that we proposed, which is behind where the old arena is at the fairgrounds, there is currently water in that spot. So that one would be an issue. Where the rodeo stock are kept during the fall fair, there is water lines there, but it's our understanding that they're not deep enough for in the winter. So those would have to be replaced with something deeper. And I think as a club, we'd be willing to help with a solution for that problem, if that's the best site for the city for the cattle.
The advantage of that site, I guess, is that the facility is already there, the trails are already there. I might say we would be in October and out in April, so we wouldn't be in Fall Fair's road at all. And we'd clean up after ourselves.
And that city water, obviously it's hooked up to, is what you're referring to. Counselor Malkinson. Sorry, if you don't mind using the microphones, the cameras pick you up. Thanks.
That's why I don't like moving it. I should just keep it in the same position. But in your bit of correspondence here, you outlined three different options, I suppose, or three different proposals. Is the first one, which is directly west of the Encana Center, your most ideal situation?
Hopefully, sorry, I hopefully you mean east, because west would be the soccer park.
Yeah, that's what I meant, sorry.
Just wanted to make sure.
East, it's right there.
I think we're open to any of the three options, and any of them would work for us as a club. I think the, like Matt had suggested, that where the stock are kept during the rodeo is a good site because there's currently, they have some good facilities there. The water's the only issue there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
My only question, and we'll cover it off when we get to the letter and ask staff at that time, but I believe, just so you know, we do obviously have, as you heard earlier in the meeting, about bylaws within the community, and I think we have a bylaw that states we can't have livestock within the community for purposes like this, so it might be a full change of that. But we can probably ask that question with staff when we get to the report, just so we know the process of if or how, what would have to be changed. But is there any further questions for the delegation? No, let me say thank you too, because every single time you drive past the Lakota Center, it is a busy place. There are, you know, haulers, horse trailers, a lot of people come to that community, and it's, as you said, it's mostly volunteer run too. So we're really proud of that facility, and I know the people who utilize it are very pleased with everything I hear as well, so thanks for everything you do as well. Excellent. Okay, well, thank you very much then for coming in. So on that, we can go back to under the agenda, under correspondence. We have five one, so we'll modify. Brenda?
We have one more delegation?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're totally... He's sitting right in front too. Sorry, Carl. I was thinking we'd deal with that, but no, we'll finish off with delegations first. So six four, thanks Brenda for that. So we have Mr. Chandler in attendance regarding a bylaw change that he looks like he's requesting.
Okay. A couple of weeks ago, I went and I paid to have some signage put up on some buildings that I own and some buildings that I've built. A couple of years ago, I had the option to start building commercial buildings, and it's been two years, we've done, we've just started number seven and eight. But I've lost it to some people because I couldn't advertise, because there's another builder that was over in the airport that had signage up for two years. So I put my signage up, and four days later I got told to remove it because it's third-party signage. I'm just, I'm a small business owner, and I understand there are policies and bylaws, but believe the bylaw needs to be updated and amended. If you drive around the community, there's plenty of examples on, just on Alaska and Eighth of lots of third-party advertising and lots of... You go drive through Tim Hortons, there's a bylaw there that they're allowed to advertise. It was just a nice little simple two-by-three sign I put up, and I asked the tenants and the owners of the buildings that I did where they were acceptable of me having a sign up. Since I put the signs up, I've had three businesses that are looking to come to Dawson Creek that didn't know that there was businesses in Dawson Creek that could build a building and lease it to them. So I'm asking to have the bylaw amended so I can leave my signage. I'm not asking for a bunch of signage, just my signage on my properties and/or or the buildings that I do, so people know that there's somebody in Dawson Creek that can facilitate what they need for their businesses. My signs are professional, I think. I pay, they look well, and I'd like yous to go see them.
Excellent. So Carl, these are, just so we understand, so these are buildings that you bought the land, you've built the buildings, and then you leased them out? And so what ends up happening is a company comes and leases it, they put their sign, because they're the ones in the building, but you're asking to put constructed by Celtic Homes.
Constructed by and/or leased, like, I'll change if the wording is not proper. I do have constructed by, and I would put leased to, but I mean, all these properties over there, I took a big investment to do this, and it brought it brought business to the town. But I'm not asking for big signs, just a sign over in one corner of a fence that says that you probably will come here, deal with me, and I don't see nothing wrong with the signs.
Okay, do we have any questions? Counselor McFadden first.
So my understa, I guess to staff, if Mr. Chandler owns a building, he then is allowed to put a sign on it. If he doesn't own the building, he can't put his sign on the building, notwithstanding the fact that the person that owns the building says he can do it. Is that the way it is?
Actually, no. The third-party advertising requirements in the bylaws say the use in the building is the only use that can be advertised, so if Mr. Chandler had built the building and sold it to the person, he wouldn't be allowed to put a sign up that said constructed by Carl Chandler or Celtic Homes or whatever. If he still owned it and leased it, he wouldn't be able to put up a sign that said this building owned and leased and constructed by. Those are all third-party advertising that isn't permitted under your bylaw. That's the will of council at the time those regulations were put in, was that you were seeking to limit the proliferation of signs. It's not common. Their regulations are all over the map. The kind of signs that Mr. Chandler has would be permitted in Grand Prairie, for instance. Some places they're permitted, some they're not. In your case, they're not.
Yeah. But to Counselor McFadden, so while Carl's building the building, and when he finishes the building, he can have a sign up saying constructed by Celtic Homes, and then as soon as he leases it out, if that's three months later, then he's, under our current bylaw, he'd have to take his sign down and let the new person, even though he still owns the building, the new person put their sign up.
And I see myself as being the primary business there, because if my business wasn't there, they couldn't come and conduct their business.
And he still owns the building, so Counselor Parzl.
Yeah, I lean in towards suggesting we change our bylaw. I was driving around the I may have the wrong title here, but the new industrial park by the airport. And I had to visit a couple of places there, and I wouldn't want to swear on a stack of bibles about this, but I'm sure that we have people who put the chain-linked fences there, who were the companies that put them up. So does that violate the bylaw? I'm, I think that I can't see anything wrong in what Carl is requesting, and unless I can hear some compelling arguments, otherwise I would ask that we consider changing the bylaw. But I'm wondering about, does the bylaw also apply to manufacturers or installers of chain-linked fences?
If I can, maybe if we can for now, we'll restrict our questions then to the delegation. Under mayor's business, I'll bring it forward at that time, and then we can have maybe questions of staff and some ideas from there. Is there any other questions for Mr. Chandler? Or Counselor Malkinson?
How did your sign get noticed? Where was it placed?
I think initially when they went over there, we had done the Cat Rentals building. And they wanted us to maintain our sign there because they had their signage on that billboard until until they had their signage straightened out. So the bylaw officer went over there, and, but it just was coincident, the same day we were about to take it down. So the next time she went over, she seen my signs on fences, right? And like, they're just a two-by-three sign, they're just on a three-hundred-foot fence.
On the corner or something, yeah.
I think that's how they became noticed.
But Counselor Parzl brought up an interesting point. But Counselor Parslow brought up an interesting point, because a lot of times you see a sign on the fence that says, "Fence constructed by."
It's even a rotary manner, they've, every time I go in there, you see the, well, there's the name of the construction firm that built the place. It's technically in violation of the bylaw as well.
So any more questions for the delegation then? Thanks, Carl, and good luck. And actually, I appreciate your point that, you know, it's great to have somebody local, so there's an option here that we want to make sure people know of. You don't have to bring somebody from out of town to build your buildings. We have local companies, local trades, local business people that can do all that right here in Dawson Creek, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So on that, we are at mayor's business, I believe, now, or we can actually go back, I guess, before that, to the five-one. We're jumping all over today. So let's do that one first, five-one, which was the letter from the Mile Zero Roping Club, and this was their request to find a suitable location to house cattle at the Lakota Agriplex. Counselor Schuman.
Yeah, I would move that we try to work with the Mile Zero Roping Club and see what we can do for them. You brought up the point about the bylaw that we don't have livestock hanging about town, but through you to staff, if we could discuss that. But I do support trying to work with the club. It sounds like they're doing really great things out there, and that this would help them out.
Okay, so for clarity, are you making a motion that this go back to staff then to come back? Or are you asking to change the bylaw? I'm not sure, because we have to get that clarified, I think, first.
Well, I would like clarification about the bylaw, and if, you know, if that pertains to the fall fairgrounds. I know there's all sorts of animals down there all the time, so I don't know what is livestock. I mean, are the horses livestock, or, you know? So clarification of the bylaw, I suppose. But I would like to support the Mile Zero Club in this endeavor, and that staff work with them to do so. So.
Okay, so Counselor McFadden is seconding that.
What is the motion?
What is the motion that you have, I was just going to say, because if this is, we can't just say work with them. If it's a bylaw, then we have to...
Well, okay, so then, through you two staff, can we have a clarification on the bylaw before I make any motion?
That's great.
Sorry, I just want to go back here to Tyra, because we do have a motion on the floor that has been seconded. I just want to see what that is.
I had worded it that the request be referred to staff for reporting during the bylaw amendments.
Perfect. That's what I was hoping, to say something like that, because then we're okay. Counselor, or sorry, you're okay with that for now, but Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, we can bring you back a report. The two of the locations specified here are not yours. They're under leased to the Rope and Saddle. One is city-owned and controlled property, so we would have to look at those. The water is actually quite a big issue, and so we could get you together a report on that.
There'd be cost to that, too, then, possibly? Because of the water?
There'd be significant cost in the one location. The other two, I'm not sure what the cost would be. One of them already has water available, so we'd look at all that. I don't want to go to that work, though, if then your council's reaction is going to be, we don't want 100 head of cattle and all the manure and smells and activity within our limits. So as long as you're fine with an outcome that might allow that to happen, then we'll go ahead and investigate it, but it wouldn't be fair to the club to do all that work if that's not going to be on the table for you.
Is he doing a super motion now?
Well, it's, right now, the motion, the way I think Tyra has it, is just to refer it back, so we can have a report.
Yeah, I would suggest if you're doing that, you're messaging to me that it would be acceptable to you if these other issues could be...
There's no, so yeah, to your point, there's no point voting in favor of this motion if you don't want this to begin with. Counselor Malkinson, then Parslow.
Just maybe in the OCP, we could find some, we'll get some idea of the best use for that land. And I'm speaking of land east of the Lakota Center. I'm not sure if that's, I don't know, I'm not sure if the type of use that was asked by the delegation is the best type of use that's right there. Jim, do our, do any of our documents give us any guidance on that?
Yes, they do, your worship, and of course, the two areas within the existing exhibition grounds are already tagged for this kind of activity. The land to the east of the multiplex is not tagged for basically that kind of use. It's more for future commercial development. This is a temporary use, of course. This is a seasonal use only. It ought not to compromise any of your options going forward, because I don't think they have asked for, or you intend, to sell them a piece of property for an ongoing use.
Hey, Counselor Parslow?
Okay, our CIO asked if we were messaging that we would be supporting this concept if the staff went to that work, and I just, I would be supporting this bylaw, because I would want, I'm wanting to, council to message to our CIO that we would like to accommodate this request somehow, if it's not, if it's feasible.
Jim, can you, or Brenda? Right now, as alluded to, there's already cattle down there at the auction mark, which is a commercial operation on land. There are cattle that come in for the fall fair. Are those in contravention of the bylaw, or is there special circumstances, especially for the auction mark? Because there's hundreds of head that come in.
No, the prohibition in your bylaw is against a stock, a livestock operation in your community. So when livestock are passing through, through an auction mark or through the fall fair and exhibition, or frankly, when they're coming to the multiplex for the night of the roping, they don't contravene your bylaw. What will contravene your bylaw is if you have a stock operation where you house feed, water, stock, and you're going to get very, we'll have to get a, we'll have to get an interpretation from our lawyers, because you'll be very close to the line, surely, if it's going to be more months that they are there than they are not. You know what I mean? These are cows that would live in Dawson Creek. They, you know, they'd be part of your electorate. They'd meet the test under the Elections Act.
If they were cats, they could vote.
So I mean, it's not, it's not really just an in-and-out like the fall fair or like the auction mark. They would be domiciled in Dawson Creek. We'd have to get you an opinion on that.
Okay. Counselor Schuman.
So the horses that are kept down at the fall fairgrounds year-round, are they considered livestock, or?
No, they're exempted, the multiplexes. They're allowed to be.
But over, like, over by the auction mark, those horses over there?
Those horses over there are problematic.
Oh, well, I know they're problematic, but... I know they're problematic, but...
So I would hate that this discussion led to a complaint over something we've never had a complaint over before.
All right.
Okay, so the motion is to send it back to staff to look at the options available, or possibly change the bylaw, seeing if this can work to help the individuals. Any other questions? Counselor Malkinson?
Should we, well, yeah, maybe we ought to have the staff report first, but I'm just wondering about the first option. The two questions that I've asked already might give you guys some idea that I don't necessarily think that the usage right beside the Lakota Center is the best, but I certainly would be interested in hearing opinions on the other two options, so. Let's just throw it all in, I suppose.
Well, and I agree with you on that, because that's, right now, it's used for overflow parking. People drive there, people park there, they camp there. You know, that was not, that's not the intended purpose when we built the multiplex. So there are other concerns, who knows, are there other options in the fairgrounds area? Whether those options can be worked out to be with the other people who would use those areas, that would be another hurdle, I think, but, I mean, that stuff, I guess we can find out when staff comes forward with some options.
Yeah.
Okay. No other questions? So all those in favor then, and unopposed, and it's carried. So now we'll go back to where we left off as well, which is under mayor's business. Start with our delegation six-four, we had Mr. Chandler in attendance here requesting a change to the bylaw. I think we, my opinion is that we should make a motion and put that back to staff to find out how that bylaw could be changed to allow something like this, but I think, again, it would have to be carefully worded. We've, again, back to your Pandora's Box kind of comment, but when we have it around the community already, it's great to see, you know, a business owner's coming forward, trying to just make sure that he's doing it and following the bylaws, so we have to make sure that the bylaw accommodates him, if that's something that council wishes to see. I see this around in lots of other communities. Our bylaw doesn't allow it. I think we'd have to be careful how it's worded, but I'd like to make the motion then that we send it back to staff to come back with a proposed amendment to the bylaw to accommodate this. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I would second it, yeah.
Okay, and Counselor Schuman?
So would we be looking at just simply the signs that say, "Constructed by"? Because I could see, you know, people that have fences around their facilities putting up, you know, dozens of signs. Somebody pays them to put a sign up on their fence, and then we've got a town proliferated with signs.
In which we have bylaws covering that already.
So that's different, separate than this?
And that's my thought as well, and I think that's where we'd have to really be careful on how we change this or look at this. Jim?
Through your worship, Counselor Parslow is just pointing out that you made a one-of amendment at one time to allow third-party advertising what was on the fence between inland and Tim Hortons, but of course, you don't have the authority to just give one business owner the right to do that. As you know, that use is profligate now. And you can look out our windows now and see those advertising signs, because you opened the door for that, and it's there, so. You, I'm assuming that's not your intent in referring this back. We will try to write you wording that will restrict these signs to the purpose that was requested, which is the person who owns the building or who constructed the building can have a sign saying, "I own this building," or "I constructed this building", that you're not intending to open it up for a sign that says, "Shumpet Joe's for us," you know?
No, and that's, that is completely my thoughts, anyway, because I know the concern that we have. And that's, I don't think our delegation today was implying anything but that. But I've got no problem if we look into this a little bit and construct some ideas of, if we're going to allow this, that, you know, he says right now his signs are two foot by three foot on a large commercial building, that's not a very big sign. But we don't want to get to the point where people start.
I have no problem with what Carl is proposing, but I just want to make sure that it's worded, so that we don't end up with, you know, fences full of signs.
That's right. And his request is if he is the owner or the constructor of the building, he'd like to advertise that.
He makes perfect sense.
Okay, so any other questions then on that? I hope staff understands the vague direction that we sent right now with our specific ask. Okay, so all those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. Now, the only other thing I had under mayor's business was just, again, to welcome everybody to the city of Dawson Creek from around the province. It's here for the Bantam Boys Provincial Tournament that's taking place. Jim, I'm not sure if you want to tell me what the score was last night for the Dawson team?
Actually, I must admit, I left when it was four-two white horse, but I'm sure...
Four-four?
Four-four.
They came back. Excellent, because Bantam is 13, 14-year-old. I left when it was two-nothing. They scored two quick goals at the beginning, and so Dawson Creek won their first game as well, so congratulations to them. But it was a, pretty well a packed house last night for the opening ceremonies and for these teams, I think it was eight teams, 10 teams, from around the province that are here in Dawson Creek, 13, 14-year-olds, and this is quite a big deal. Jim?
And through your worship, the home team plays every night.
Yes.
So I believe tonight's game is 8:00 PM, but it might be 7:30. But their, the last game of the night is the home teams, because people who are working get a chance to come out that night and see it. I urge you to go out. It was a nice packed house there. Last night, opening ceremonies, RCMP provided two members in red surge. It was really very nice.
Should mention on that, too, the two gentlemen who showed up in red surge were, came and talked to me afterwards, and they were really excited to do it. It was their first time. They're the two new recruits that we have here in Dawson Creek. One of them's only been here less than a month, and the other one, just a little more. And it was their first opportunity to get out and do something like that, and they were pretty excited and happy to be here as well, so it's good to see when the RCMP get involved like that. But yes, it's going to be going on for the next four or five days, and just invite everybody down, because there was a lot of volunteers, spent a lot of time to put this together, and it's great to have these hockey events in town. As you remember, council also supported this event, so.
Are they billeted out through the community, or are they in hotels, or?
Most of them are actually in hotels, from what I understood, talking to some of the parents, so.
Through your worship, they are, all the teams are staying in commercial accommodation. Nobody's billeted, and we haven't put any up at the fire hall or any of the things we've had to do in the past.
Good, thanks. So on that, we're going to move then, Jim, to the diary.
Nothing new on the diary, your worship.
Excellent. And nothing under the consent calendar for this meeting, so we'll go to the strategic priorities chart, Jim.
And again, nothing new on the strategic priorities, your worship.
Brenda, did we have anyone for question-answer period?
No one has signed up.
Okay, so do we have any questions for the media at this time, before we go into committee of the whole? I know it's a little early. We do have some of the people that are here. Do you want maybe to take a five-minute recess at this time, and then we'll make some calls? Thanks.
No, we have farm implements. We had someone offer to sell us a bunch of farm...
We'll call the meeting back to order. Oh, that one's off, okay. And we'll move into committee of the whole. We'll start at 51 with our staff sergeant.
Hey.
So good morning, thanks for coming in.
Good morning. So I guess I'll start right away and say, I think the story that everybody was kind of interested in was the spate of armed robberies that we had recently. And it's sort of a mixed bag, I guess, in terms of how we want to look at that. We have solved 100% of them. We have offenders in custody on all of those files. And so...
Good job.
Yeah. We certainly, obviously, a lot of that has to do with the fact that the public took an active role in those things, and, you know, that's tremendous. We're just really hopeful that nobody goes a little too far, gets hurt. That's obviously a concern that we have. We just want to make sure that it doesn't go any further than that. But, you know, I mean, in any police, in any police investigation, the involvement of the public's absolutely crucial. It usually doesn't take place in that way, but it was...
Welcome to Dawson Creek.
Yeah, no, it's tremendous civic spirit, that's for sure, so.
That's one way to put it.
Yeah, no, it's a nice problem to have. So, you know, and there were a few stragglers, there were a few that got away after the initial robberies had taken place, and we mopped those up by investigation, and we've arrested those people, and they're in custody and facing charges. And in fact, we've already got people that have been sentenced on these robberies, so they're looking at some fairly lengthy custodial federal sentences and stuff like that, so.
Does it go way up when it's with a weapon, too?
It is. There's minimum sentences when it involves a firearm, and that's something that we pursued and had to support a crown in that. So that's good, and our view on that is that these offenders that are responsible for doing those types of crimes are probably also committing a large number of other crimes, both reported and unreported throughout the community. So I think anytime, anytime you can get these, the offenders that are involved in the most serious offenses in custody, it's likely to have, you know, a fairly significant effect on the overall crime rate in the city. So that, currently, we're involved in an initiative where we're attempting to reduce the property crime in Dawson Creek by 5%. That's the goal that we've set for ourselves. And I think getting some of these offenders in custody is going to go a long way towards achieving that goal. So, yeah, so that's, so that's good. You know, I mean, it relates to an increase that we've observed over the last year in the opiate or prescription drug trade that's occurred, and, you know, so there's a higher level of desperation, I guess, and for some particular people. And we're going to keep monitoring that. That's going to be something that we're going to be working hard on dealing with, is dealing with, you know, both the crack cocaine trade and the prescription opiate sale, you know, trade. So that's our, that's our current challenge, and that's going to be one of the ways in which we try to meet this property crime mandate, so.
Do you have a question?
Sure, yeah. The, I don't know if you're wrapping up or not, I'm sorry, but the individuals involved in these... The, uh, I, I don't know if you're wrapping up or not, I'm sorry, but, uh, the individuals involved in these, uh, armed robberies, they, uh, I hear that they're all facing, uh, mandatory minimum sentences, thanks to conservatives?
The ones that involved, yeah, the ones that involved, uh, firearms will and the ones that were committed in disguise, that'll be an aggravated factor, that'll be considered at sentencing as well. And so they will all be looking at some fairly significant custodial sentences and, um, you know, we'll just, uh, we'll see what the sentences end up being and whether they're convicted and whether they go to trial and so on, like they're, we're a long way from, from,
Of course.
There yet, but in the meantime, the community is safe during the time that they are actually in custody and that's.
Yep.
Counselor McFadden?
Uh, thank you, staff. Was there any repeats, uh, like double dippers or were they all different people for different robberies?
Yeah, I know there were, absolutely, uh, w- one male was responsible for two, um, and, uh, at, uh, at some future C O W. meeting, I'll be in a position to tell you how we caught him, which is a good story, so.
I know on your stats, you, you say false alarms thirty-six, is that like nine-one-one hang-ups or?
Usually what that relates to is, is commercial premises, so the, so, uh, it's an intrusion alarm and a commercial premise. Um, we're, we're trying to work with some of the business owners just to kind of, uh, tidy up their alarm systems a little bit so that we don't end up getting those, uh, repeat, uh, repeat, uh, false alarms, uh, and, and most business owners are really, they have, they have as much at stake as we do, so. So they're, they're, they're being really cooperative and we're, and we're gradually getting a little bit of a reduction in some of our more frequent, uh, false alarms, yeah.
Thank you.
Is anybody else?
No, sir, did you have any more you wanted to?
I just had one more thing and, and that is, uh, we, uh, we had a fairly long period of, uh, parental leaves and various other pressures on our staffing situation, but we've kind of stabilized a little bit and we're gonna be rolling out our new municipal traffic position, um, which will be starting, uh, I've got it down as April fifteenth, but we've actually got it to April third, now we're gonna be rolling out our municipal traffic position, so. That, uh, the purpose of that will be to deal with school zones and distracted drivers, uh, during the day and to deal with, uh, you know, impaired drivers, uh, uh, later on, uh, at night and we've got, that position will be shifted, day shift and night shift, uh, so that'll be strictly to deal with the traffic, uh, concerns, which I know, uh, those tend to be the issues that you guys hear about and they're certainly the issues that I hear about, so. We'll have a greater capacity to deal with those, so obviously I'd invite any of you, if you do hear from, uh, people that they're interested in having that level of, or that type of enforcement done, give us a call because we're, we really now will have a resource to be able to deploy, uh, strictly to, to deal with that issue, so.
Good. Excellent. And my, uh, my favorite, I'm hoping, is in the, uh, works plans for this year again, which is the bike patrol?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that's, uh, quite popular with the members as well, it's a, it's a good deal for everyone, so.
Excellent. Uh, wanna say and please pass on our thanks too, we were just talking before you came here, uh, that we had, uh, two of the new recruits, uh, in the red surge at the opening ceremonies for the hockey last night and, uh, it's great to have, get them involved, it's great to have them in the community as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were really eager to participate, like they were, uh, they're, they're brand-new guys, they haven't, uh, got less than a month under their belts and, and, uh, yeah, they were very, very pleased to participate, very proud to have been asked actually, so, yeah.
And one, one thing I found, uh, and I think we've talked about this before, that I always, uh, I like to hear is when they write out at Depot, they actually choose Dawson Creek as their first post is?
Yeah, we're, we're starting to be a more popular, uh, more popular choice, we've got, uh, um, uh, the staffing letters that I've received lately have indicated that that is actually people's preference is to be located in this community, uh, or in the piece in general, but they've, they've specified Dawson Creek and so it's, it is nice to have people that wanna come here. We've actually got some, uh, interest from members with service as well, like interested in laterling here from other detachments, uh, you know, and that, and that's actually a nice, uh, a nice mark of progress, I think, as well, the community and the detachment level, so, so it's good.
Uh, that's changed from when I first got on council, but Jim?
Yeah, to your worship, uh, we'd be remiss if we didn't mention also that the, um, yes, it's great that the kids out of, uh, Depot are, are keen and eager to come here, but, uh, the older members of the detachment, uh, who are here find it, um, they integrate themselves into the lifestyle of the community and Sergeant West is at the provincials every day because he's an official down there. He's, uh, been lining, uh, games through, and will throughout the weeks.
Yep. No, that's excellent, and, uh, uh, congratulations to you as well, we didn't see you last committee of the whole, Sergeant West was in here because, uh, uh, you obviously were, uh, preoccupied, uh, with your wife having another child, so.
Yeah, a new arrival.
So, uh, congratulations on that.
Yeah, no, that's, uh, those are happy times for me as well, yeah, thanks very much.
Excellent. And if, any further questions though? No?
Yeah, thanks very much.
Looking forward to a couple of meetings from now when you can give us the scoop on that story.
Yeah. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll move on to, uh, fifteen-two, uh, Fire Chief. Good morning.
Good morning. So there's nothing unusual in the report from, uh, from February, from last month, uh, calls are about average. A few things we're working on, we're still working on our emergency planning, that seems to be taking up a fair bit of time. Probably all noticed, we had a fire investigation course last week, uh, a really good turnout, we had nine of our guys, there was twenty-six total, uh, that took part in it and, uh, out of those twenty-six, or out of the seventeen out of town, I think there was, uh, eight that actually stayed in town and, and hotels and whatnot, so, kinda generating some money for the, for the city as well, so. Other than that, uh, we had one, uh, one retirement today, we got, uh, Dennis Kosturki after thirty years is done in two days.
So, was it this Friday is his?
It's today.
Today is the party?
Sixteen-thirty.
Oh, okay.
He's, he's got two days left, so he's got, he's working today, so Tuesday, Wednesday night, Wednesday night, I think, is his last official day.
Official shift.
But tonight's the party.
Are they, they're celebrating him leaving before he's left?
I think that's so he can attend.
Yeah, okay. Um, and how are things going with the, uh, construction over there? I came over and had a look at the renovations, it looks like we're almost complete, it looks good over there?
Yeah, I think the only thing we have left to do is, uh, the, uh, keypad for the front door. And I believe that came in on Friday, now the electricians just have to install it. Other than that, I think it's pretty much done.
And, uh, smiles around, truck is ordered?
Truck is not ordered, we have to go down to meet with them to build it, I just got an email from the guy today, wants to know, wants to get together and set a date. So hopefully that'll be within the next couple of weeks, we'll actually go down to Abbotsford and, and sit with them and discuss the truck.
A lot to getting a truck, isn't there? It's not just putting in the budget. Any, uh, any questions for shorty? Perfect, well, thanks very much for coming in and give our best, uh, to Dennis as well and thanks for all of his years. And I'll try to pop over there and see him later.
Okay.
Director of Corporate Administration, good morning.
Good morning. Um, in my report, I'll just highlight a few things, um, we've been busy with communications, um, there's the annual report, our community newsletter, the community magazine we help assisting tourism Dawson Creek with, um, trade fair. All those, um, take quite a bit of time with our staff. I was gonna comment on Captain Dennis Kosturki, but, so congrats to him. Um, I will comment that, uh, Tyra just recently attended the Fundamentals of Corporate Administration course and, um, scored ninety-nine out of a hundred on her final exam, so.
Sneak.
It was an easy test.
Open book.
You took one wrong on purpose just so you know you weren't.
I knew I had it wrong, but I couldn't think of the answer.
Um, and we do have a community ga- community engagement workshop scheduled for May sixth and that's going to be a half-day with council and a half-day with senior staff to work, to develop a comprehensive communication program for the city.
Do we have, and I'm sorry, I might have missed it, is the N D I. helping with that one?
Yes, N D I. is, uh, providing that, all we have to do is pay for travel and accommodation.
Perfect, yeah, like, 'cause the gentleman that they've, uh, hired over there. Quite, quite, Joel, yes.
Yeah.
Quite good at that.
Where is that? That's here?
We will have that here.
What day?
May sixth.
May sixth, okay.
Any question?
We have a special meeting that morning with regards to the budget, so you'll be.
Oh, really?
Tenants already, and just carry on the morning.
There we go.
Yeah. It's the final budget meeting for approval, fourth reading?
It's, it's actually, I think, the first three readings.
First three readings and the fourth reading's two days later or something.
And the last thing I wanna comment is I recently attended the N C L G M A conference last week in Prince George. Um, there was three of us that went from the city and about seventy delegates there, um, lots of great sessions for me personally, like bylaw preparation and F O I. and land disposition, so it was really relevant topics. Um, there was an offer from one law firm to do a free legal review of our indemnity bylaw, so I think I'll take them up on that.
And probably, uh, thinking of all the committee of the whole reports, you're probably, probably the best under special events and activities that we can now say, Loretta Lynn's coming to Dawson Creek to the Encana Event Center, was officially announced this morning.
Oh, really?
Oh, so you didn't know?
I didn't know.
Actually, to be honest with you, I didn't know either until my wife just texted me and said, "How come you didn't tell me?"
Can I ask who is Loretta Lynn? She?
She's the coal miner's daughter.
Yeah, seriously, is she?
You don't know? Um, I always thought that was a prerequisite to become a counselor, but, uh.
Well, I, I looked at you, is she, is, because of your background in music, is she rock singer or something or what is she?
By background in music, I know exactly who Loretta Lynn is and I thought by your age, you would know exactly who Loretta Lynn was, but. Is that a low blow? That was a good one. She's, um. Yeah. She's probably.
Pretty close.
From the sixties, Jim, would you say? Sixties-seventies? That's before your time too, I know, but, country artist from?
She's a country artist.
That's why I wouldn't know of a country, yeah. Remember in the sixties, I was at University in London and that was the era of the Stones and the Beatles and Small Faces and The Who and.
Which we're trying to get here in Dawson Creek.
Yeah. American artists from the sixties, I wouldn't.
We'll forgive you on, on not knowing.
Why, but many of the rock artists from that period of time are deceased, whereas the country.
The mayor may give you some background on that as well.
Yeah, I can give you a few reasons, but I won't get into that right now either.
Mark that one on the wall.
That's right, yeah. Anyway, just had to rib.
Yeah. Can I just ask, just not ask question of, uh, just give you an alert, so whilst it's fresh on my mind, um, the Mile Zero Path Society and the Historical Society, um, uh, as a tripartite agreement with the city, it's coming up and I have said that, uh, the corporate officer of the city's an excellent resource in, uh, wordsmithing some of the language, okay, so.
All right.
They, I advise them to see you earlier rather than later, so if you see somebody coming on that, one of those groups, you know it's me to send them.
Excellent. Any more questions for Brenda then? If not, we'll move on then to fifteen-four, Chief Financial Officer, Shelley, good morning.
Good morning. So you have the report in front of you, um, this time of year, um, it's all about year-end and budget. Everybody was at the budget public consultation, uh, I guess it was just, uh, a little over a week ago, a great turnout. Got some good feedback and, um, so presently, uh, just keeping that information, it'll be reported out on the next budget meeting and, um, working on the five-year plan with the, uh, projecting what's gonna happen over the five years, so that'll be at the next budget meeting as well. We had the auditors in last week, so we were focusing on that and, um, it's expected that the financial statements will be ready to go by the end of April, hopefully, so, uh, stay tuned for that. And then on the strategic priorities, um, those are, uh, pretty much hurry up and wait as we finish, uh, year-end and budget, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Maybe not so much a question as a comment, um, thanks for your help too at the, uh, the first budget meeting that we had there. I had a lot of great compliments afterwards, uh, of yourself and the city, uh, for putting on that, that event, it was one of the best turnouts I think we've ever had. And the remarks and the comments, anyway, that I received were, were very positive, more so along the lines that people just appreciate being engaged. Uh, there's always a difference of opinion of how or you, you spend money or how you make, uh, allocations around priorities, but, uh, everybody I talked to was, uh, very appreciative of the fact, at least we go through the process of making sure people understand, uh, better where their tax dollars go, so. So thanks very much for your efforts there.
My pleasure.
Any further questions or comments then for Shelley? No? Okay. Then move on to Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Developments. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. So I'll start with, uh, conversation on water and then I'll finish with snow, so.
Isn't it the same thing?
Uh, last few weeks been, uh, working fairly diligently on the, uh, upcoming water meter, water meeting on April twenty-fourth. We have, uh, a draft newsletter put together and we'll be getting that out to the public, uh, first week of April or maybe just, just before Easter or just after Easter, it'll be going out in a mail-out and with lots of information there, so been working hard on that, um. I'll mix in a little bit of development, uh, was looking at the numbers here this morning, our, uh, building development's been really strong, uh, for the start of the year, so that's, that's great to see. Got, uh, seven and a half million dollars to date in developments, so.
Compared to two-point-three for the same, same time period last year, that's, you know, three times as much, that's.
Yeah, it's great to see, so hopefully that continues. And, um, the, on the subdivision development, there's still lots, everybody's getting geared up for what appears to be another busy year, it looks like. Um, south of one-sixteen, that development will continue on and finish up, um, north on seventeenth, on each side, um, there'll be continuation on one side and it looks like on the east side of seventeenth, um, looks like they're gonna get started this year as well, so. And I did have calls about the land over near, um, Park Hill School.
Again?
Sounded like they were gonna get going again, so.
Still the same company though?
Yep, so that certainly looks like it's, uh, it's gonna be a busy year. And, uh, thought I'd touch on our reclaim usage out at, uh, our reclaim plant. I think this February is the first month that we've seen that, um, the usage at the truck fields exceeded any potable water use. So that was really good to see, we used, uh, about thirty-two thousand cubic meters compared to about twenty-four thousand of water, so there's been that shift, which is great to see, so hopefully that continues. And I know the daily stats right now, again, they're using the reclaim and it's, uh, it's been good usage, so, let's hope that keeps going.
What we wanted.
Yeah. And just a quick update on our lovely weather out there and our snow removal, um, crews got, uh, quite a few of the downtown streets completed last night and they're removing it as we speak. One more night downtown, we should have that finished up with tomorrow loading it out. And I think by tomorrow night, uh, we should have been over every street in town. Some of them probably, uh, like the mains, eighth, seventeenth, fifteenth, we did two or three times at the initial out, uh, when it started to snow, so, yeah, crews did a, did a great job. So, it's good to see, so about seven days, we got over everything. We'll have to go back and, um, touch things up, obviously, um. The reason things went so well, a couple of things, obviously this was fairly light snow, so that enabled us to go fairly quick, but also crews spent a lot of time over the last couple of weeks, cleaning gutters, pushing snow back, opening everything up, so that really enabled us to, uh, get through a lot quicker than maybe had we not, so a little preventative medicine certainly helps, so. Anyways, if there's any questions, I'll, uh, take that now.
No, I, I thought, uh, I thought the crews did a great job, I mean, you always hear the complaints because everybody wants their street done first, the first day it snows and unfortunately it, uh, can't always happen that way, but under our policy, you try to get seven days, so does that mean that at the end of this, uh, we'll be into all the residential areas, the, the Crescent Brooks, the Willow Brooks?
Yeah, by tomorrow night, we should be through, uh, knock on wood, through every street, residentials, everything.
Excellent.
Should have seen a plow.
Excellent. And we engaged a private person with a grader this time?
Yeah, we did hire one, we were unable to get the second, but they've been working with us since, um, I think Thursday. So, yeah.
Excellent. Yeah, I know, and I did see, um, quite a few of the staff out there, you know, they're, they've given up their evenings and weekends too, they're out there working, so.
Yeah, we did double-shift everything over the weekend, so, uh, both graders working a day and an evening shift and, uh, yeah, we had pretty much everybody we had available to us working, so.
Excellent. Questions then? Councillor Malkinson?
I've got, uh, one question, and I'm not sure if there's a answer to it or not. I was wondering if there is any idea on preliminary numbers at the, uh, new bus route, or the temporary bus route that we've got up top on seventeenth?
I haven't, as far as ridership?
Yeah.
No, I haven't heard anything on that, um, as of yet, that just started at the beginning of the month, so.
Makes sense.
And unfortunately, this next couple of weeks with spring break, um
Yeah, yeah, that's right, too.
It's gonna be, uh, sway those numbers a little bit as well, I'm thinking, but
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, it's a good opportunity, though, if not councillor, just to remind people that it is up in that area.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Jim?
Well, through your worship, looking at Kevin's report, uh, on your issue of sign proliferation, even just a change for Carl, apparently, is gonna add about sixty signs a year, looking at how many buildings he's doing in a month.
Yeah.
I'd like to be in the business of a sign shop then.
There we are.
Unflick.
Any other questions then for Kevin? Okay, well, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And Director of Community Services, Barry. Good morning.
Good morning, your worship and council. I can only go on record to say it's always tough to follow a politician on a speaking engagement at, uh, the opening ceremonies of, of hockey, so.
Thought you did great.
So, just a couple of highlights, extremely busy time at the Memorial Arena for us as we, uh, wind down and get ready for the drive-through events, but, uh, a couple of key highlights, um, you know, hats off again to another volunteer group, the Mile Zero Figure Skating Club. Had three hundred participants, and then we, we talked lots in, in the range of what we know economically and developing what that means in our, our region for how to host something like that, but also economically driven on, on those numbers on which we, we know, uh, that was a full weekend event, so congratulations to them, and they, they also have their major competition coming up in March, and their final, uh, annual carnival, April thirteenth, so they've got a very, very busy stretch. Packed in there is, uh, the mayor and, and council have alluded to, uh, this week's Dawson Creek Minor Hockey hosting the Bannam Tier Three, and I, it's been talked about, but I just wanna highlight where these teams are from. Uh, Quinell, Revelstoke, Castlegar, Wanda Fuka, uh, Cranbrook, Port Moody, Smithers, Langley, White Horse, and of course, the hosting Dawson Creek, so uh, I only had to take the, the venture, uh, I think it was five years ago or four years ago when I came and, and I did a provincial down in Crest and to know how far some of these people are coming and the commitment, and, uh, obviously, as, uh, Jim had talked about, they're all staying in our local hotels and, and, uh, there'll be a lot of activity this week, and it's nice that we've brought a hockey atmosphere with lots of snow, but, um, it'll be good to see that activity throughout the week. And then we flip over the Dawson Creek Archery Club and their annual event on March thirtieth, thirty-first, so some very key things around that, uh, for activity. Uh, Ken Borick, uh, the numbers continue, um, in that nine, ninety-five hundred to ten thousand a month. Our staff has been working very hard to look at new opportunities of, of, uh, continuing to bring family activities and, and events, and, and one of those will be in partnership the egg, Easter egg extravaganza, uh, we've got a lot of, lots of wording in that one. Um, in partnership, uh, the group is working, we'll use the, the space within the Encana Center, the upper, upper area and the lower area, there's nothing on the bowl side. Uh, that space has, um, been a good opportunity to work with, uh, Community Living, who used to put the Easter egg, uh, outside, and, uh, they're moving indoors this year in partnership with Success by Six, the Encana Center, uh, Busy Bee Signs and Graphics, and a very big push for family, it's a very huge family day activity, and, uh, last year they had almost, I think they said eight hundred participants, so uh, that, that's a huge one for one day, and, uh, the pool in partnership with, with the passport side of that will offer a tuna swim, and we're gonna offer that in between one to eight P.M., so uh, we're expecting a very busy, uh, day that for sure. Uh, we've got lots of activities throughout the Easter weekend, but I think that, that will be the highlight opportunity for families to participate in the community on that day. Um, I wanted to highlight in the Recreation Department, I passed out a number of these, I've probably already received, uh, the Community Leisure Guide, and, um, Tara wanted me to talk about this a little bit. This was, we, we've had a, last print we did, um, we ran into a bit of a glitch and, uh, the printing, uh, was smeared, and, uh, the company came good for that and reproduced the, the product for us. Uh, but in that, they also did a little bit of, um, additional research, and for this product, um, we produce eight thousand of these, uh, four times a year, and it cost us fifty dollars more for the whole product. Um, so, competition, that, that ability to produce at this quality, uh, of readership, um, you know, one of our challenges is always the font and the coloring and and readability, so I think Tara's done a great job with that. Forty-six hundred or four, just over four thousand go local, sixteen hundred rural, and then the rest, uh, we distribute throughout the community, and, and it's a great, uh, way to promote, um, fun activities in our recreation cultural, uh, community that we do have. Uh, I wanted to plug again, um, the annual cleanup, uh, hard to believe with all the snow we got, that it was, it is just right around the corner. Uh, some key dates coming up in April and May, uh, to take note of. We're starting to try and highlight in our cow, uh, some work around some of the sustainability work that Mel does downstairs, and and those are mostly geared toward, around activities within the community, and, uh, World Water Day and, and Drinking Water Week are all within those, uh, parameters. Uh, some events highlighted by Mel, uh, stay tuned for those and, and participate, I'm sure council gets, uh, involved in those quite a bit as we go through. Um, safety, and I profess that I don't know too much about this, uh, that, um, around the WCB rates. Uh, I spoke to Duncan early this morning, and, and really, this is per hundred of salary, up to seventy-five thousand in salary, and our rates, um, the base rate, uh, for public sector this year is set at a dollar fifty-two. Uh, so our rates are at a dollar fifteen, so we've been doing, uh, some good work in the safety side of that, and, and I think that's, uh, you see the odd blip, um, in that, where it went up to one thirty-nine, that's, you know, all it takes is a slip and fall and injury of one of our staff, that, that can go that high, but uh, significantly, uh, we've made some huge changes in two thousand, and, uh, we've got a good safety committee that works at that, uh, very much, so kudos to the safety committee, and that includes both union and management on that. Um, and finally, a number of special events highlighted, um, that are there, so I'll just wrap that up, and if there's any questions that I can answer.
No, any questions? Councillor Malkinson?
Um, in your, uh, report, you had, uh, you mentioned the advertising scheme at the arena and how it's filling up so much there.
Yeah.
Um, just maybe from my own information, is it possible that, uh, I could maybe have the revenue that we get, uh, emailed?
Sure, certainly, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was one of those, if council could remember, we, we s- I think since I've been here, we've looked at a variety of different ways internally, uh, to go, to go out and get that, and this individual came forward with a, a reasonable opportunity, and it, it certainly is nice to see, uh, the arena fill up, uh, with some of that advertising, it, it, uh, it creates a different ambience of, of, uh, what a, a rank board advertisement looks like, and I think it's very much within, you know, the realization of what, it's, it's not overly, uh, flash, but, uh, this individual's been able to do that, so I'll prepare those and send them to, uh, through to council.
That'd be cool.
Any other questions then?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Barry. We'll finish off our committee of the whole today, we have our quarterly report from tourism.
Good morning.
In April, hello?
How are you all? Last but not least, right? Yeah, we brought Joyce today. So, thanks everyone for having us today, I'm just gonna go over a few highlights of our report. Um, first off, uh, we're almost complete our visitor guide in Community Magazine, so this has been our main focus for a couple of months. We've really enjoyed tackling this project, connect, uh, connecting with our stakeholders and the businesses and all our attractions in the region as well. Uh, like Brenda hinted upon, we are in our proofing stage, so staff and, um, through staff, uh, have been helping us proof as well, so that's going really quickly, we're hoping to get the final to, uh, deliver to the community in April, so we're gonna have it at the trade show, and then from there, our next phase is distribution. So, um, for the community magazine, it's gonna most, mostly local, uh, and our visitor guide, as you all know, goes through our visitor center network. Uh, we mail them out in our inquiries, which last year we had almost three hundred inquiries come through the visitor center. And we also go and send them to our advertisers, so they have a copy, and then through that, we ask them if they would need any more for their businesses, accommodations, attractions as well, so it goes up to a lot of our partners, and of course, our, um, international inquiries as well. Uh, next is our marketing, so, you know, through Tourism Dawson Creek, we always wanna make sure we're marketing the destination, and so this year, we've really tried to share the advertising opportunities with our stakeholders. So, uh, many co-op, uh, co-op advertising opportunities have come through Northern B.C. Tourism. So, this year, uh, uh, already, we've been promoting the Northern B.C. Tourism Travel Guide, which came out last month, uh, the Milepost, which of course is the bible to the highway. And, uh, I am also now a director of the South Peace Arts Society, and so we've, uh, partnered with them to go into the, sorry, um, Arts and Cultural Guide to B.C., and it's gonna be a two-year publication this year, and we're gonna be focusing on the thirtieth anniversary of the art gallery, and then, of course, our historic walking tour brochure, so that's sort of the focus on that one this year. And then, also for marketing, our last two things are the coupon book and the staycation. So, this year already, we've increased from nine partners to fifteen in the coupon book. And our deadline for advertising is gonna be March twenty-seventh, so there's still some space, but we're just really excited that our smaller and medium-sized businesses are really sort of observing the effectiveness and affordability of this campaign, and we print ten thousand copies each year and they, they fly off the shelves, so it's really exciting, and it lasts for a year. So, we usually start it in May and it ends the end of April for then to fall, uh, the next year. And then, of course, our staycation, so Safeway signed on again to be our major sponsor, and usually, the, um, prize is a thousand dollar ga- uh, gas card before Safeway, which is great. Uh, and then this year, we're gonna look to increase our participation a bit more, maybe more strategically with our partners, so as you know, there are attractions in our community and also Pusco B. Um, in January, I had the sort of opportunity to go down to Quartzsite, Arizona, and I represented the Northern B.C., uh, region, um, along with the other five regions in the Tourism B.C. booth. Uh, the RV show in Quartzsite brings almost a hundred and fifty thousand visitors, and so many of them stop by to talk about B.C. as a whole, and then what really shocked me was their trips up the highway, and they had stories and they had, you know, mishaps, which we all know happen on the highway. So, it was a really great opportunity to connect with those visitors that may already be coming, may have already came, and that are planning in the future, as we all know, it's a bucket list item as well, so, which is great to hear. Uh, and lastly, our social media, um, we really do raise the profile of Dawson Creek through our Mile Zero Alaska Highway page. Um, already this year, we're up to four thousand seven hundred and seven fans, and so we've seen a great increase in the last couple of months in conversations, sharing our content, and then, of course, connecting with our other partners through social media. Uh, we do share the Do- City Dawson Creek, any postings that come through there. But we also have the Northern B.C. Tourism Region, uh, North through Alaska program, and actually Dustin is now working with Think Social Media, he's spearing up that campaign, so he's seen that page grow a lot, so we've been linking the two pages as well, so we've really broadened who sees the posts and, uh, our travelers can sort of get information and, uh, doing their research as well. And, of course, I'd like to acknowledge Joyce, she does our social media, uh, with our Facebook, and she does a great job. It's constantly keeping up with the ever-changing strategies on social media, as everyone knows, as the phases come in and out, but she's doing a great job. Uh, we also welcome anybody that isn't on our page to come, uh, like it, and if there's any comments, please let us know, we're open to that. Lastly, we're ra- ramping up for the summer, I can't believe it's here already, where did winter go?
Well, it's still here.
Yeah, true, sorry, yeah. In my mind, it's, you know, we're focusing on May, we're getting there. But, uh, in tw- twenty-twelve over twenty-eleven, we saw a two percent, two point eight percent increase in visitors. So, we're really, really excited to see those numbers finally in for the year end of December, and that really translated to over fifteen thousand people stopping at our visitor center, and of course, we promote them to our local community and then also our region, we try to convince them to stay a bit longer. Um, also, we are now recruiting for our summer positions, so our summer positions are considered a visitor center councillor. Uh, we're looking for five posi- five positions this year, and one of them, um, we have one position allocated in there for the Alaska Highway House, so they funnel through, everyone that's, uh, hired also works at the Alaska Highway House. And we posted the job through Job Search locally, uh, go to UNBC, uh, Vancouver Island University, and also the Grand Prairie College. Just trying to, um, we apply for funding through the Canada Summer Jobs Program, and it does stipulate that the students have to be returning to a post-secondary, uh, post-secondary ed, uh, institution, so there are some restrictions on the funding, so they have to be students, which also helps us in turn that they have skills and we can develop other things like social media programming. And then lastly, we've actually done some work on the visitor center, so we've, uh, moved the desk a bit, so the front-end staff can have more space welcoming our visitors. We've done some painting, and then we've actually reorganized the retail space, so better showing off our retail, the highway of our local community, and then to hopefully increase some retail sales. So, yeah, if there's any questions, please let us know, but I think April's gonna finish off.
Yes, I just, uh, wanted to, um, uh, acknowledge Tourism Dawson Creek and, of course, Councillor Schuman and Councillor Malkinson for attending the Community Heritage Values Workshops, which were, uh, the one in Dawson was one of three that was held in northeastern B.C. And, uh, the turnout was very strong, so was the discussion, and, of course, the outcomes are, uh, very important to the overall research, uh, for the nomination of the Alaska Highway as National Historic Site in Canada. So, I think one of the other items that we have been working on in order to improve our communication with stakeholders and, um, other, uh, uh, other, other tourism agencies is that we have been developing a newsletter, which will be distributed by email and then also a print sh- print version, so stay tuned for that. So, thank you very much.
Good. Now, do we have any questions? You caught me off guard, Samantha, I mean, usually I'm used to the Tourism Quarterly Report, when, you know, and people before you, and we'd be going to our lunch break soon.
Yeah, exactly.
But that was very succinct, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, any, any questions then?
Not a question, just a
Go ahead.
Statement, I guess, um, you know, we have one serious problem as it relates to tourism in our community, and that's because the Canada Tire, Canadian Tire Sandy Dump is now closed. Um, so, uh, people who use RV vehicles, now I understand there's only one, uh, free sandy dump, and so, uh, the Mile Zero Part Society asked me to pass on to, uh, Kevin, and Kevin's, may have solved this already, I'm just alerting you that, uh, they recommended a second one go in because there's a, that, they see that as a real frustration for visitors, uh, so you might want to, Kevin may be able to give you a report, he may be talking to you about your views on location.
Thank you, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Kevin to see what our possibilities are, but, you know, we always try to focus on our services that we give to our visitors, and that is a big one. And, of course, the accessibility of the Sandy Dump, you know, with Canadian Tire, it was a pull-through site, there was lots of parking, they could do some shopping, and, yeah, I'll definitely speak to Kevin to develop that.
Yeah, and definitely worked out well, we just need to remember it was a private business who was offering a free service to the, to the region, and, uh, thank them for that, but we definitely need to, uh, keep in mind that, you know, it's something we need to look at, definitely, I've heard the same thing, so.
That's great.
Thanks for bringing that up, councillor. Okay, any other questions, comments then? No, well, winter is almost over, so, uh, thanks very much.
I'm optimistic, right?
Yes.
Pause your thinking, thank you.
Obviously not a skier.
Sorry.
But in saying that, you've probably got a pretty good season in so far. So, on that, um, we have now then a motion to recess to the closed with the addition of item seven-one, which under ninety-one A, we can allow to go into the closed with the rest of them, so. Councillor Malkinson, seconded by anyone, Councillor McFadden, all those in favor? Opposed, and it is carried, and we'll take five minutes before we go into the closed.